Good evening. I would like to call the Cumberland School Committee meeting tonight, Thursday, February 13th, 2025, at 7:01 PM. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Consent agenda. Approval of minutes for regular meeting 123, 2025. Oh, I'm so sorry. Approval of agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Ms. Smith.
Second.
Second by Ms. Feather. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Consent agenda. Approval of minutes, regular meeting, 123, 2025. Approval of minutes, executive session, 123, 2025. School bus inspection report, 117, 2025. Enrollment report, 24, 2025. Transportation report, January residency truancy report. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Shea.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes seven to zero. Report out of executive session meeting. Report out of the executive session meeting on 2/13, 2025. When we report our executive session votes, the committee voted to approve the issuance of a subpoena as modified by counsel with a vote of six to zero in response to a request from a party to an appeal under policy K5. We have no other votes to report out. I would like a vote to seal the minutes of executive session. Your motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Shea.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bacon. All in favor?
Aye.
And that passes seven to zero. Dr. Thornton, superintendent's report, please.
I'd refer to Mr. Adams tonight.
Good evening, everybody. So, we have some very special guests here tonight. We have Mark DeSisto and Sarah Boucher of the DeSisto Law Firm. They can explain to you what they do, but in the big picture, they have worked for years, and in Mark's case, for several decades. I believe when he graduated from law school, "Eye of the Tiger" may have been one of the hit songs in 1982. I hate to say that out loud, but I just did. They represent municipalities, school departments, all across the state. They are often retained by the inter-local trust to do so. They have, I think, the greatest depth and expertise in that world. And so, Dr. Thornton's thought was it would be great to bring them here, and they can give you, share their wisdom and experience from their perspective as lawyers that don't do exactly what I do for the committee, where I'm serving really in a general counsel role, really kind of more embedded with the school department. Their job comes if there is litigation that is specific against the school department or against the town or city. So, without further ado, and please, if you have questions for them, I'm sure they'll tell you that, you know, this is your time with them, okay?
Thank you.
Mark and Sarah.
So, as Steve indicated, I'm Mark DeSisto. This is Sarah Boucher. I'm talking because I'm going to go first for a little bit, then Sarah's going to talk with you. What we'd like to do is give you a little bit of an overview of what we do, the types of cases that are going to, that may surface with a school committee, what you should do as a school committee to expect when these cases come, what you should do to mitigate the risks, and then we'll answer any questions you have. We'll go as quickly as we can. I know you have a big agenda, and we'll answer any questions that you have at the end. That's probably the best way to do it. I hope you can all hear me. That's great. I want you to know that Steve is right. I graduated in 1982. The trust, your insurance carrier, came into existence in 1986. I had the first case for the trust, and I've had them ever since. And so, we get a lot of cases where schools, school departments and school committees are unfortunately sued. I can tell you, as I, as we say to all town councils and school committees that we speak to, you're going to get sued. I mean, it's just the way it is. We live in that type of a litigation atmosphere, especially now. And so, you shouldn't, you don't want to, but you should be expecting it, and it's part of what you do. You have two great people here, and I mean that. Phil Thornton, I think you know, is great, and Steve is tremendous. So, you'll hear us say throughout our little discussion today, use them, rely on them. I know you do anyway. I do. Our office does. So, here's what we thought we would do. We thought we would just discuss with you the different types of litigation that may come up, and I will tell you internally, your, the people you work with, how you may get, there may be suits involved with that, and then externally, what you should do during it to mitigate it, and what to expect when you get, if and when you get sued. If you have a question and you don't want to wait until the end, that's fine. We'll answer anything you have, and if we're, someone has to say to us, there's too much time.
Speed along.
You know, it's okay with us. So, I will say that, you know, when we try jury trials, the jurors look like you right now, and then about 15 minutes, you're like, when is he gonna stop talking? God, stop talking. So, we'll try not to get to that point, all right? So, there are generally some categories of suits that I think a school committee has to watch out for, and one of them is internal. In other words, your employees, your faculty members, and so forth. And that's a potential area of exposure. So, I thought I would talk to you about some of the cases that are trending now. And right now, there are a lot of discrimination suits with employees. And so, again, I'll say this over and over again. Steve is your source. He'll tell you if you get sued or how not to get sued in any particular situation. But, you know, discrimination is very easy. It's an adverse action based on something that's improper. So, it's based on your status. So, if someone doesn't get promoted, and the reason is, in part, not full, but in part, because of their status as a female, their status, their race, their religion, their gender, their age, their disability, that's a suit. I mean, oh, go ahead.
And I will say, fun fact, age discrimination claims, you are eligible to bring in age discrimination claim at age 40. So, the...
Think about that.
I would like to consider that quite young, but that is, that is the minimum age for age discrimination claims.
So, how does that apply to you? Well, if the school committee is, takes part in hiring or promoting, and I'm not sure, and you'll help me, Phil, like, do you hire the coaches? And does the school committee approve that? No. Okay. Well, let's, so moving on.
So, it will stop...
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. And you're always going to be named. So, you know, you've got to look at that, and the only thing that I tell you to watch out for is just what I said, that if, if the, if the adverse action is motivated in part by the gender of the person, in part. So, what does that mean? It means that a judge is going to instruct the jury that there may have been other reasons to terminate this person. But ladies and gentlemen, if you find that part of it was the race of the person, or the gender of the person, or the age of the person, you lose. And it's easy around this forum today to say, well, that'll never happen. Until you get cross-examined on the stand and someone made a comment, are you sure you can do this job, you know, is it for a younger person? Then we get a problem. So, you as a school committee, if you take part in that, or if you know about it, you got to look at that. Discrimination claims are determined mainly, I think, at trial by comments, by things that are said. One other thing to look at is in disability and other types of discrimination claims, statistics. So, I say this to all the town councils and all the school committees, so I'm not singling you out. You ought to look at your roster of employees, and it should fit the...
Democratic?
Yes. This is so, Sarah's so great. This is what happens when you're old. It should fit the demographic of your town. And if it doesn't, you may have a problem. It doesn't mean you have to be exact, but that should play a factor here. And I tell the story, and I'm not going to go on and on, but you know, our federal court, they bring in jurors, and about three or four years ago, they noticed that the jurors that they were bringing in didn't fit the demographics of the cities and towns. And for some reason, minorities weren't on that pool. This is the federal. And so, they didn't just say, oh, okay, too bad. They did something about it. They said, why aren't we reaching minorities? Why, if we send a notice, why isn't it, you know, why aren't they coming? And they did something about it. And in two years, they brought it up, so the demographics are right. Something to think about when you're, in your hiring practices. What are the statistics? What are we doing here? So, that's, that's discrimination. Sarah's going to tell you about harassment, and then we'll move on from there.
Okay. So, harassment is, you know, another form of discrimination, and this plays out in a way that an individual or individuals in the work environment are creating a work environment that's difficult to tolerate for some of the employees. And, you know, I'll give you an example of a case that we've handled, where the town administrator is joking around a lot with his employees, right? And he thinks that everything's funny, and his, he thinks his employees think it's funny, and there hasn't been any complaints. Well, he's made some jokes of a nature that are sexual in nature to a female subordinate. And again, he says, I'm joking. I thought this was funny. I thought she was on board. She would laugh. And then, lo and behold, we get a lawsuit, and, you know, she didn't find his comments funny. So, you know, you need to be aware of, you know, what's going on in the workplace, what comments are being made by you to others, by people who work in the school department to others, because, you know, you can't unring that bell. Once those comments are made, once somebody feels uncomfortable, you can get yourself into a situation where there's a hostile work environment or harassment discrimination claim. And again, that can be based not only on sex, but it can be based on age, disability, religion, really any of those suspected classes that Mark has already talked about.
I can't tell you how many times I've heard from school committee members, or superintendents, or anybody, it was all a big joke. Everyone was in on it. Everyone thought it was funny. Well, it is until someone makes a complaint. When you have a harassment case, you're going to look at your policy. We'll talk about policies in a minute, but, you know, sometimes that calls for an investigation. Let me tell you what goes wrong here. What goes wrong is if you don't listen to your lawyer, or your superintendent, or town council solicitor, and someone from the town council or the school committee does their own investigation, you've killed the school committee. You've killed the town. Don't do that. I've got three or four cases where the school committee on its own, without any criteria, went out and investigated and made findings that, in one case, they thought the findings were good. No. And in another case, they thought that they found against us, where if it had been done, in my opinion, the right way, that wouldn't have happened. So, when there's a harassment complaint, and it comes in to the school committee or through the superintendent, that immediately should be handled by Steve, who may say, this is what we're doing or we're not doing. If you, you can't act independently. That's for sure. But, go ahead.
Okay. I think that's all I had on harassment, unless you have something else.
No, there we go. We're going to go right to...
Okay. So, we're going to go right to retaliation. So, retaliation, you know, is another in this kind of groups of claims that we see, where you simply can't take negative action against an employee because the employee reported some type of wrongdoing, or even something that they perceived to be wrongdoing, even if it's not actually wrongdoing. And we handled a case where a employee of a municipality was instructed to drive a certain vehicle, and he said to his, his boss, hey, I don't think that that vehicle's properly registered yet. I know it's pretty new. I don't think that the registration is actually current. And the, his boss said to him, I don't care. I'll deal with that if there's a problem. You go ahead and drive it anyway. And he said, well, I'm not going to do that. I'm going to take a different vehicle. So, he went out and he did his job using a different vehicle, and then when he came back, he was terminated on the spot. And you need to be careful here, because even if this is a situation where you say, well, he was insubordinate, and he should have been terminated for that reason, it's so close in time to his, his complaint of wrongdoing, or his suggestion of wrongdoing, that you might find yourself in a retaliation claim.
The trend now also is, if, if I file a claim against a school committee, and I'm, in-house, I'm a teacher, or I'm something, custodian, something, and I file a claim of discrimination or harassment, then I ask for a promotion, and I don't get it. Now, there may be legitimate reasons why I don't get that promotion. I can then turn around and say, this retaliation because I filed suit against you, or because I have a, you know, a pending HRC claim, you know, Human Rights Commission claim. So, you've got to be cognizant of that, and how do you mitigate that? Sarah will tell you. You have to document.
So, documentation is incredibly important, especially when you're looking at disciplining or terminating an employee. And, you know, the way this often plays out is we'll, we'll meet with the client for the first time, and they'll tell us that, oh, this was a terrible employee, you know, for years we've had problems where this employee was showing up late and not finishing work on time, and, you know, not performing and leaving early, and all of these things, and we just couldn't take it anymore, so we had to terminate the employee. And we say, okay, that's great. Let us see the employee's file, and it's clean as a whistle. And then, you know, as you're going through the litigation process, the employee says, I have a perfectly clean record. You know, there's nothing in there to indicate that I was this terrible employee, that my former employer is saying that I was. So, when you have a problem employee, and you're aware of it, it's very, very, very important to document that, because if there is a lawsuit on the back end, it makes our jobs a lot easier in representing you. It makes your jobs a lot easier as defendants in a lawsuit.
You, there are some, some guidelines that I say you've got to rely on Steve for, and that is, you know, how do you discipline someone? Verbal warnings, written warnings, and it's, it's difficult to talk about this, because, you know, in a, in an environment where they're, where you're working with them, where you're a little bit removed, you're a school committee, it's sometimes difficult to give a verbal warning or a written warning. You've got to seek guidance on that. There are issues where sometimes you have to give someone a hearing or notice, and I don't want to get into louder mill, but Steve will guide you on that. Sometimes you just can't make determinations without giving the person notice and an opportunity to be heard. And that's, that's an, I'm a, a big advocate, where if you're in doubt, have, give them proper notice with enough time where they can get a lawyer or not, or prepare their arguments to you and make their case. It never hurts, and you should do that anyway. So, think about that all the time, and rely on Steve or Phil when they say, this is what we need. That, it'll help us out, because inevitably, on a, you know, if you, if it's a non-renewal of a teacher for any reason, we have a lot of suits like that, and we, what we, the first thing we look for is, were they given proper notice? Were they given an opportunity to be heard? Did they have any issues with that? I can't come in today? I'm not feeling good? Too bad? Uh-uh. Can't come in today? You've got to work around that sometimes, okay? So...
Another thing you, you want to be on top of is policies and handbooks. I know Mark has mentioned, you know, policies and handbooks in passing. It's very important that you, as a school committee, be proactive. And by that, I mean, you want to know what your policies are, what handbooks exist, and where they are, and you want to look at them, know what they are, and are they up to date? And by way of example, we had a suit where I was working with the town manager, and they didn't really have a human resources department, but they had somebody in the town that was kind of dealing with HR issues. And I said to both of them, you know, we've gotten some discovery requests in, and I need to provide any, any handbooks you have on, you know, sexual harassment employee policies, those types of things. What do you have? And they both told me separately, oh, we don't, we don't have any handbooks. We don't, we don't have anything like that. And then about a week later, I was talking to the town clerk, and in passing, she mentioned, oh, well, we had an employee handbook that covered sexual harassment and, and these types of things. It hasn't been used in a little while, but yeah, it exists. So, you know, it's really important for you all to know what's there, to look at it, and to determine as a group with your attorney, with your superintendent, is this something that works for us today? Is this something that we need to modify? Obviously, Steve can work with you on, on updating any policies that need to be updated. The trust, you're a trust member. The trust also has a wonderful resource in, his name is Mike Corey. He's an HR consultant for the trust, and he was an HR representative for the city of Newport for a number of years, and he's an excellent resource as well. So, there are plenty of resources for you out there, if you're interested in evaluating and updating your, your handbooks and your policies.
See, you should know right now how many policies you have, you know, handbooks and all that. You should know that. Someone should look through them, make sure they're up to date. So, Sarah's being nice. We put, based upon in that particular case, and Steve, you, your head is close, well, we put, there's no handbook.
In discovery responses.
In discovery. We put to the other side, there's no handbook, there's no policy.
Then there was.
Yeah.
Then there was.
Yep.
And so, I got to tell you, like, you know, those of you that don't know me, you know, I'm a big yoga guy. I'm very calm, you know? Like, that day, it's like, what? Like, you're killing us. You're killing us. And you can't have that. So, you as a group, know your policies. Look at them. Are they up to date? I'm going to guarantee you that some, everyone's policy can be updated. Look at it. Go through it. And here's the big thing. Follow it. There's a case out there in Rhode Island, I tried a case 30 years ago, where I don't think that my, I think it was a municipality was liable. I don't think they were, except their policy went beyond regular negligence, or it was lower than, or something. And the court ruled, you know, DeSisto, you made a good argument that your client wasn't negligent, but they violated their own policy. And since they violated their own policy, that's negligence. The case is Seid versus East Providence. So, S.E.I.D., so. So, if you have a policy, you got to follow it. And if you don't like your policy, change it. So, there's that. Here's the big thing. When you have employees, you have a good, you have good employees here, and so it's not, this isn't a, trying to be critical of your employees, but employees have problems. You've got to know, awareness is the key here. You've got to know, stay on top of it if you're the school committee. If there's a complaint that comes to the school committee, you've got to take it seriously, even if you think it's frivolous. You've got to go through your steps. You've got to document those steps. And sometimes there are legitimate concerns that you, as a school committee, have to, have to decide. But you only decided based on the criteria that's in your policy and by guidance. I'm telling you, that's, that's the way to go, to avoid issues like that. So, I want you to know something. See, when Steve takes a depot, I'm always looking at him saying, oh my God, look at all those papers. He's going to talk forever. So, don't worry about these. There's not a lot of paper here. We're going to be done sooner than you think. There are, I told you, there are notice issues and an opportunity to be heard. You've got to rely on Steve and Phil to tell you when people can be heard in public forums like this, and when you can say you've spoken enough. I had a lawsuit in federal court, April of this year, on that very issue, where someone said, I wasn't allowed to speak, and I don't think I was allowed to speak because I'm a minority. And we had, that was a five-day trial, and we had to justify why they were allowed to speak, why, you know, were they treated the same as everybody? Ultimately, the jury found that. But you've got to be cognizant of those things when you, when you as a group have a public forum like today. So, if you think about that, you're going to be fine with your, with your in-house. Sarah's going to tell you a little about trials that come from outside of this area, and then we'll move right into mitigation and things like that. Are we doing okay time-wise?
Okay. Great.
I have a question.
Yeah.
If you have an hour, you could talk.
Yeah, sure.
The first thing you talked about was either retaliation claim, you know, the example of a person who drives a truck and not gets, or doesn't want to drive a truck and not get hurt. And then, another example...
Sorry. Another concept is harassment or hostile work environment, where my supervisor says things to me based upon my membership in a protected class. I'm a black person, or I'm a member of religious organization, or what have you, female, over 40, whatever. What, what advice do you have, or what thoughts do you have, might be the better way to put it? Let's assume for sake of argument that the folks up here have acted with integrity. So, the place where you're coming from here is that there is no discriminatory intent or action in reality. There is no retaliation in reality, but there is a threat, a belief, a claim, a whatever. And we're left in a position where we have a person who would otherwise, there would be adverse action, there would be a termination, there would be a whatever. And our, you know, again, we're starting from the hypothetical that we're acting with integrity here, right? So, that's where you have to start in order for this hypothetical to make any sense. I'm just curious, I know what I think in those circumstances, and it's that we can't just cower in the corner and not do our jobs, and we have to suffer the consequences, whatever they might be, but I, that's my thinking on it, and I'm curious what yours is.
We're on the same page.
Yeah. And I will say, I, just this week, I had an issue come up where I have a plaintiff who, it's not in the employment context, I have a plaintiff who is suing a police department for an incident where he alleges the police officer used excessive force and some other claims. And this, this plaintiff failed to meet a legal requirement that he, that he has to fulfill, and the police department came to me and said, hey, we're looking at drawing up an arrest warrant for him. I know he's a plaintiff in a lawsuit, and I said to the police department, listen, that's your job. If in your professional judgment, this is the way that you need to go, that's it. We'll, we'll deal with it. We'll work with it.
We always say that that's, that's what insurance is for, too. I mean, you've got to, you've got to do what's best for the school department and not. So, that comes up, as you know, that comes up all the time, and you've just got to go forward. But, document... But, document. You know, this is why we're doing it. This is how we're doing it. Trying to do the best thing we can, but we have a legitimate reason for doing this. This comes up all the time with, you know, that he or she is not showing up for work after a while. What do you do? They've got this claim out there, and you know you're gonna get a constructive discharge claim. But you've gotta act as if that's out there, and then we'll just live with it. That's the way it is. That's a good question.
Even in the, in the context of the sexual harassment, hostile work environment case that we had, the plaintiff was still working, which is unusual. Oftentimes, you know, you see someone bring these types of suits after they've left the position, or they've been terminated. This employee was still working for the municipality, but in a different capacity. And she said to her supervisor, "I think that the, my former boss, who I have a sexual harassment suit pending against, is now retaliating against me because he's treating me differently, and I think it's because of the lawsuit." And at that point, we actually retained an independent investigation because we did not think that there was anything, you know, amiss about the conduct of the town employees at that point, and we wanted to confirm that by bringing in an independent investigator.
You just have to, you have to go forward. And you used a, you used a good word, cowering. You can't. You've got, you've got a job to do. So, you just go forward, and then we, you know, we take our lumps and go. So, all right. So...
So, moving on from kind of the employment context, you know, another, another type of claim that you'll likely see, negligence claims, right? These are your typical slip and fall claims, your accident claims, right? Somebody comes here for a school committee meeting, and, you know, it's raining outside, and they slip and fall, and then they file a lawsuit against the school department. Another area of negligence claims that we oftentimes see, especially lately, are negligent hiring, training, and supervision claims. And I have a case right now with a school department where a parent, parents are alleging that their child was being bullied by three girls, and that one day at recess, they were playing tag, and one of these girls kind of maliciously pushed their son. He fell backwards and broke his wrist, and they're saying, "Where were, where were the school recess aides? Why weren't they supervising? Why didn't they stop this? Why didn't they do more to supervise the children?" So, you'll see claims like that sometimes come up. And those are negligence claims, but they have to do with the hiring, training, or supervision of employees.
So, document, document, document. This is how we train. This is how our supervision. Accidents are gonna happen. And when that happens, you've gotta go back to your documents and say, "This is what we did. This is how we hired them." But here's where statistics plays a part in it, too. Well, how many of these have you had? You know, if you have seven issues on that playground with Mrs. Smith, you're gonna, you're gonna get involved in that. There's a problem. So, you've gotta look at that. But by and large, it's documentation. So, just document everything. Sarah's gonna tell you in a minute, the trend, that over time, cases change and all that. We have a tremendous amount of bullying cases now. That's the boutique suit. And that word is thrown about a lot. And so, it comes up in Title IX. Steve, they, you talked, they know about Title IX, or?
Yes.
Okay. So, Sarah's gonna just tell you a little bit about our side of Title IX. You do the administrative side, which, you know, you gotta do. And then there are Title IX suits. And when Sarah tells you about them, they're in the concept of, think about, you know, a bullying type of thing, and that's what we're gonna, you're getting, a lot of suits are on that.
So, you know, as you know, you're all familiar with Title IX. Title IX says that "On the basis of sex, no person should be excluded from participation in, denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any education program or activity receiving federal funding." Cumberland School Department receives federal funding, therefore, it has to comply with Title IX. So, as Mark just mentioned, there are two areas of concern under Title IX, and one of those is regulatory compliance. And again, that's Steve's wheelhouse. We're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna intrude upon that today. What we're concerned about is potential for litigation and exposure to damages. So, there are two types of cases that we see in litigation under Title IX, and those are generally student-on-student harassment, and less often, teacher-on-student harassment. So, how do these cases play out, right? There are kind of two main categories of cases here, and one is there's some alleged kind of sexual misconduct, sexual assault, sexual incident that occurs off of school property. Oftentimes, you know, we'll get a case in where, where a student says, "I was sexually assaulted at a friend's house over the weekend." But what happens is, the bullying begins, and it infiltrates into the school environment, and it affects that student's ability to learn and participate in the school environment. The other issue that we've seen is an alleged sexual assault, sexual incident of some type actually happens on school property or during a school program or activity, because Title IX isn't limited just to the school building. If you are on the bus on the way to a football game, if you are at the prom, if you are at a senior overnight, these are all activities that fall within the school's control, the school's programs or activities. So, there could be liability for the actual sexual assault. Why weren't you aware of what was going on? Why didn't you do more to prevent these types of events from happening? And it seems kind of outlandish that you would have these types of sexual activities happening on the school premises, and our office has had three cases so far in the past six years or so.
Yeah. Here's the interesting thing about those cases. So, invariably, on the, on the sexual activity that happens in the school, it could be consensual, but you see, it can't because they're minors, and they can't consent. So, if you have a sexual incident in school, and then one party says it's non-consensual, and the other party says it is, it doesn't matter. It can't be consensual. That's a problem. And if it, we've all had, you all see this, you know, there's a party in someone's house, two people, Sarah clues me on the words, hookup, you know, right? And then, then later on, there's talking about it, and one of them says, "That, it was forced." You know, "Wasn't, wasn't me. I, it was forced." And then they take that into the school, and half of the school is for the football player who says, "You agreed to this," and the other half is for the female student, and, you know, there's name-calling and all that, and then it interferes with the educational process. What do you do in that case? Because you can't say to one of them, "You're out." They're both entitled to an education. So, Phil, you have like stay-away agreements, okay, or?
Well, again, it's investigation, and then we'll do the neighbor, we'll do the conversation, and then we're right here. And then we're right to deal with it. And I will say, knowledge and open release. In light of recent events, this could be a big policy, which is being followed along the other direction. You have a person who, or approved by my policy, and that means that, like, money. And you've got to know that's what we are now. Also, to get it complied, it's really important. But on that, I think that it will be a much, it's a, that's...
And, you know, the interesting thing is, you have those stay-away agreements. Those are difficult to enforce. I mean, they're just difficult. So, you're between a rock and a hard place. We understand that. And that's why I say, you know, you're gonna get sued. I mean, I, those are just bad, bad things. Yes.
May I ask a question? I'm hoping that I can ask this because I'm a stickler to the OMA and all of those things. But in the situation of Title IX, especially because, yes, we already knew that, we were bringing it up, we were looking at it with policy to make the changes. Title IX is a good example of, the federal is not matching the state. So, what do we have a responsibility to, as a school committee in our policy? Do we always have to say, "No, we must match the federal," even though the guidelines of guidance from our state, or even the laws in our states haven't, they're not meeting it the same way?
Yeah. So, you're, Steve, we're talking about the administrative side.
Probably is a topic for another discussion, but generally, if there's a conflict between, a conflict between state and federal law, then you have to, the supremacy clause, which is what's in the United States Constitution, would say, "You have to follow federal law." That is a very difficult question to answer, whether there is a conflict between the two. Sometimes, state law may require, may allow more protection. That is not necessarily a conflict, or it can't allow less, but it can allow more. And so, the question, the devil is in the details of what we're talking about when it comes to that issue, whether it's Title IX or any other aspect of federal and state law where they are both addressing something. So, for example, if there was no federal law providing for paid leave, let's say, but there was a state law providing for paid leave, that doesn't mean that because the federal law doesn't allow paid leave, we can't have paid leave in Rhode Island. Of course, we can. There's no conflict there. It just means that the state is providing more than the federal government. But in the hypothetical you might be alluding to, where we have a change in the administration, particularly over the transgender issue, that gets, the devil is in the details of that. And, you know, the current administration is taking the position that, and it seems very clear in what they're promulgating, that transgender students are not going to be permitted to play in sports, for example. That would be a conflict, I think, most likely, between what the state might allow. There really is no state law on that, by the way. It's not like there's a state law on this. There's guidance. And there is some anti-discrimination state laws on it, but I'm blubbing it now. It's not simple in any way.
So, the difference is, when you're looking at that, and yes, you can make it, the states can make it more stringent or add to it?
Less stringent typically.
Less stringent. Oh, okay. Than the federal. So, the federal, I mean, those, that's where it starts, but if the federal has definitions, are the states, if the states modify, can they modify definitions? Or can they just add definitions in? Or if not modi, that's my concern, is the modify versus the add, and that's exactly what's gonna happen now.
Yeah. I mean, that's a, that is a discussion for another night, candidly. I mean, that's a, it's a big discussion. The big picture is, states can provide more protections. What they can do is, they cannot conflict, they cannot have a law that conflicts with what the federal government requires.
If you're, I'm just gonna expound on that. If you're complying with the federal, with the federal laws, and the state goes a little beyond that, then you go a little beyond the two. It's the opposite you're concerned with. If the federal is up here and the state's down here, you've gotta rely on Steve, and I'm thinking you go with what the federal law says. Federal, and, and, look, this is gonna be a, these are, these are issues that are coming up all over the place. And they're, they're, I do, we do private schools, too. They're grappling with this, this issue in sports, and there's, you know, there's different, different ways to look at it. So, look ahead. Yes.
You need to get closer to the microphone when you're talking.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Wow. There we go. All right. So, we're almost done. One more category.
Yeah. So, one of, one of the bigger issues that comes up in these types of cases, too, that we see all the time, is social media, and how social media plays into these claims of bullying and harassment in the school environment. Because the harassment isn't happening technically at school, right? It's happening online. It's happening outside of school hours, but it's affecting the school environment. And, you know, we know legally, you can't ask to see the content of any student's social media accounts or their phones. So, how do you deal with that? And really, as a school committee, it's very important that you're aware of what's going on when issues arise. And obviously, we trust Phil to keep you apprised of what's going on, and that his principals will keep him apprised of what's going on. But it's, it's so critically important to be aware, to document. If a parent comes to anybody and says, "Hey, my child received this, you know, horrific, sexually explicit, social media message from, from another student, you know, ask to see it. We need to see it. We need to document it. You need to counsel the student. You need to talk about it." If it gets to a point, we have, we've had a case where a student received a social media message from another student saying, "Why don't you go kill yourself?" You know, these are really, really serious issues, and the school did handle it, but then the question becomes, should it, should they have taken that to the police? So, you know, these are issues that are, that are ever-evolving, and, you know, they're kind of outside the purview of the school, but they really do affect what's going on in the school environment. So, be aware as these issues arise, you know, consult with Steve, consult with Phil, and just make sure that everyone is staying on top of things, documenting things, and, you know, keeping the lines of communication open.
So, two more categories. One is, the last category is, what happens when you get sued? Sarah's gonna talk about service of process, then I wanna talk about discovery and what that means to you. That, this is, that, this is the culmination of why we're here.
So, you know, as Mark mentioned, it's very likely that you're going to get sued at some point. And what happens when a suit comes in is that there's a complaint filed. And sometimes we have notice of that. Sometimes the plaintiff's attorney will give us a heads-up, and we can say to you all, or to anybody in the school department who might be a defendant in the case, "Okay, we know that there's a suit coming in. We wanna accept service on your behalf." And that avoids you having a constable knocking on your office door or your house and saying, "Hey, we're, we're serving you with papers. You're a defendant in a lawsuit." So, if we can do that, if we have the heads-up, we'll absolutely do that. We try to make the process as easy for you all as possible. But sometimes you might get served, or you might see some other legal documents. There's an entity called the Human Rights Commission, the HRC, or the R-I-C-H-R, and sometimes you might receive service of process from them, or see documents from them. Anytime you are served or receive any kind of legal document, it is critically, critically important that you send it to Steve as soon as you can. And the reason for that is, there is a rule in the state and federal courts, and it's called the default rule. And what that means is, if the lawsuit is not answered by the defendants, you all, within a certain period of time, and it's typically twenty days, unless, you know, we can get extensions, if a lawsuit is not answered in a timely fashion, you lose the case. You no longer have the ability to contest liability. At that point, we're only debating, how much damages are you going to pay? It's a really drastic remedy that, you know, we wanna avoid at all costs. And I'll give you an example of this. I have a case out of a municipality where a, the same plaintiff slipped or tripped and fell in the same location, about six months apart. They have the same attorney for both cases. The complaints are almost identical. They're both negligent slip-and-fall cases. The same two defendants, the same plaintiff. So, these suits get filed within about six months of each other, and one of them gets forwarded right to the trust, and it goes, it gets assigned to us, it goes into suit, we're all set, we're defending the case. The other one doesn't. Because, right, it makes sense that if I see this case that comes in that looks exactly like something I've already seen before, okay, I have this, I've done what I have to do with it. And turns out, it was a new case, and, you know, the plaintiff wasn't particularly diligent, thank you, wasn't particularly diligent in that case. And about a year and a half went by before anything was done, and anybody discovered, "Hey, this, this suit was served, service of process was effectuated, but nobody ever answered this case." And we were able to avoid default in that case. We got very lucky. But that could have gone very badly. And the damages in that case were pretty high because the plaintiff was hurt pretty badly. So, you know, we don't wanna make that mistake. You know, the bottom line is critically important to forward any kind of legal documentation that you see over to Steve.
Don't think he's already got it.
Yeah.
Just, if it doesn't hurt to send it, he wants it. Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
So, let me just talk about two other things.
What on earth did you do?
I, you know. Look, when you get sued, one of the things you're going to be subject to discovery, and you're a school committee, lately the trend is to sue every member of the school committee, and that subjects you to discovery, and we'll handle that. We, we are entitled to ask the plaintiff things like, you say you have an injury, give us all your medical records, tell us how this occurred, and so forth. If you're a defendant, either as a group or individually, because of something, then you're subject to discovery, and, and we're the guardians of that. But here's what you have to watch out for. Like, everything that you put in an email, in your capacity as a school committee person, somehow or another, is, is subject to discovery. Every text that you put in, now, private texts, do what you want, but emails and texts, you should assume that it's, that it's coming out. I can't tell you how many cases we have where, where the case is going along great, where it's going swimmingly along, and then a school committee member texts someone else, insults the person, or, you know, something. And, and, and now we got to live with that. Don't do it. I, that's, if you take anything from this, other than, Sarah's good, I'm old, don't put anything in a text, or an email, it's not, you shouldn't anyway. So, just think about that. Discovery in Rhode Island is very broad. That helps us, because we, we ask a lot of our plaintiffs, you know, what are you doing, blah, blah, blah. But it also applies to you, too. So, think about that, even before there's a suit, the general, you know, consensus is, I want to write to someone, or I want to say something. Somehow or another, that may become discoverable, and it may cause a problem for us. Last thing is, if you have a big case, and it's in the press, I, everyone has a right to speak. I think statements have to be coordinated. So if, if there's a very big case, you as a group sometimes have to answer to the public, you should do that, but it should be coordinated. You should decide who makes the statement, what you're going to say. If, if the, if individual school committee members, I say this to town councils, too, individual town council members, start talking to the press on their own, it creates a problem for the, for us. We have a wrongful death case, where a mayor made some comments, and he's, he's a great mayor, he's a good mayor and all that, but he made some comments about it. And I wish that he had talked to us first. And he knows that now, because that, it's going to come back and hurt us. You may think you're saying the right thing, and maybe you are, but maybe there's a better way to say it legally, or something like that. Try to be coordinated in, in doing it. On big cases, I, you know, I hope it never comes up, but if it does, have a plan, okay? I think that's it.
I think that's it.
So, any questions? All right. Yes?
Yeah. Mr. Dean?
So, you said that if we violate our own policies, we open ourselves up to liability. If we don't train in our policies, and they're violated by negligence, we open ourselves up to liability.
Well, I don't, you, when you say, train in your own policies?
If we, if we violate the policies, just because we didn't know about them.
Yeah, you've got to look at your policies. You don't want to be in a position where you're violating your policies.
We had a executive meeting where we talked about equitability. What if we, what if we disciplined for the violation of a policy for one person, and then the next person who comes in and violates the policy, we just shrug our shoulders and say, ah, you're okay, we're not going to discipline you? Is that something that we're opening ourselves up for liability there?
Well, here's the thing, you're talking to lawyers who deal in precise things, so I don't know. I mean, I'd have to look at it, but you, you want to keep in accord with your policies usually for everything, so.
You generally want to be consistent, unless there's a very good reason not to be consistent, if that makes sense.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for your time, we truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Guys were great. Okay, if you have any questions, anything at all, talk to Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, reports of standing committees. Fiscal management subcommittee update, Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The fiscal subcommittee did meet earlier this evening, and we do have resolutions and payment of the bills that'll come later in the agenda.
Thank you very much. Policy and procedure subcommittee, Ms. Feather?
Hello, we did meet as well, and we've got a few policies that we will be talking about during the public hearing piece.
Thank you. Achievement and communications subcommittee, Ms. Schei?
Yep, we did meet last month. We discussed some topics and plans for the rest of the 2024-25 school year. We focused on curriculum updates, program recommendations, and how to review student data. Hopefully, we'll be moving forward to meet with each school elementary level principals to discuss how they review their student progress. We reviewed the curriculum updates with Mr. Dimana and his team, they explained the financial circumstances with needing to renew materials such as K through two, ELA. We went over how the district is testing, using new materials, including McGraw-Hill's Social Studies for grades six through eight, ELA programs such as Wonders, Eureka Squared for math, and Open Science for grades six through eight. And we had also dived into a little bit of the lack of approved science curriculum for the elementary level, as well as fitting in the social studies into elementary schedules. And then hopefully, in April, we're due to meet with Mr. Costa and Mr. Dimana to discuss some program recommendations at the high school level.
Thank you very much. And district and health wellness, wellness subcommittee, Ms. Schei?
We did not meet, but we're going to be meeting early April.
Thank you. Public hearing, reading of amended policies, Ms. Feather?
Oh, wow, that came up quick. Alrighty, or quickly, sorry. So we have four policies that, or four amended policies that I'd like to have read into the record. The, they all, actually, three, actually, yeah, all of them, all of them were approved, three to nothing, three to zero. So we have I-12, I-13, I-15, B-2, and those are the four. I will just kind of give a summary of those. The I-12, I-13, and I-13 are both quite similar, they're about just the multiple measures and opportunities given for proficiency-based grading. So it's, it's really just about, again, students being given multiple opportunities during a marking period to, to demonstrate their proficiency. So that one pertains to both, again, the I-12 and I-13. I-15, that one, the, the difference, or the additions are just around curriculum assessment, grading, and mapping procedures. So we've got some, some information on digital platform vetting, just because that's, of course, becoming something that is just everywhere. And then finally, we just have some language in the, in the B-2, School Committee Governance and Operations, just to keep up with the times as well. So, so we've asked that those get read into the record. Again, all were approved, three to nothing, in the policy meeting we had.
Thank you, Ms. Feather, and they will be read into the record. Do we have public comment on the policies mentioned above? Okay, thank you. Old business, discussion and a vote to approve the 2025-2026 school calendar. Option A is the full February break, option B is a three-day February break.
Chair, I know last time, I think, some folks had wondered about the January 30 PD going to an earlier date, that's certainly fine, we didn't change it yet, if you want to change it, that was something that was mentioned last time, I believe.
And Dr. Lahn, how about the three days if there's inclement weather?
Yeah, we did the calculations, just reviewed that, and it is true, we have the time, so we get the three inclement days that are not made up.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion, or discussion, on the school calendar?
I would like to motion to approve option A.
I have a motion by Ms. Feather to approve option A with the full February break. Do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Dean, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Oh, I'm sorry. That passes six to one, with Ms. Smith being in opposition. Comments from the public? Okay, no comments from the public? New business, discuss, sorry, discussion and a vote to approve an overnight field trip. CHS chorus club member, NAFME, am I saying that correct?
Madam Chair, in your packet, you have some info on one student that was named to the All Eastern Honors Chorus, and this field trip is parent arranged with one chaperone Amanda Santo, and the funds needed are raised through the fundraising avenues, there's no, no funds from the family. And you have all the info in your packet. It takes place on, in April, 4/24 to 4/27, and it's in Hartford, Connecticut, I'm sorry, Cromwell, Connecticut.
Now, they've taken this trip before, correct?
I don't know how often. Mr. Costa can tell us how often students have attained this?
Yeah, students don't always make it to, but two years ago, we did have a student actually make it all the way to Nationals, this is Easterns, so they traveled out to Cincinnati. This year, we had seven students apply, but one student got selected to Easterns, so I quickly texted Ms. Santo, I was like, you've got to give me some information really quick on this, so.
Great, thank you very much. Ms. Smith?
So, it's only one student that's going to be attending?
Just the one.
And the family's paying for that, or they can seek?
So, the funding source comes from donations, from some fundraising that they do, and it is only one student, and the reason why Ms. Santo is requesting for her to be able to go on the trip, it is required that a NAFME member, adult member, travel with the student.
Great. Any other questions? Mr. Dean?
Yep. Ms. Santo, is she familiar with the overnight field trip policies that we have?
Yeah, she's, she's taken other overnight field trips, so, and Ms. Santo even suggested that if she needed to come to another school committee member, she'd be happy to come and answer some questions.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that she's, you know, read the policy and understands it.
Yeah, she, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, motion by Ms. Schei, second by Mr. Reagan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Discussion of personnel matter, teacher B, only requested by personnel at issue. We have not done this, it will be...
Presenting the executive. It's going to be discussing the executive.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Adams. Discussion and a vote to approve amended high school handbook relating to searches. Mr. Costa, Ms. Feather?
Thought this was me. It's, we'll start with, we'll start with Mr. Costa, and then we'll go to me, if you want. Do you want me to go?
You do, you boo.
You do, you boo, okay, I'll do it. Alrighty, so, just to let everyone know what this is, and on page 20 and 21 of the student handbook, or student-parent handbook, should I, I should say, we are discussing the screening for and confirming alcohol in a person's breath. We're outlining the electronic screening for that. We actually do want to make a tiny amendment to the text in that as well, so we'll, we'll, I'll request an amendment in just a minute. And, and then secondly, we also are adding in that all students and guests of students attending school-sponsored social events are subject to search by authorized school personnel prior to entering the event. This has to do, of course, with student safety. So, Mr. Costa?
Yes, thank you so much. So we were, we were informed that we really needed to look, look at our handbook, and just to tighten up the language, I did want to let you know that this process for students to go to social events at the high school level has been going on even before I became a principal, at least as far back since I, as an assistant principal in 2013, I'm not sure if it happened before that. And this is something other schools do as well. And speaking to our other dean, Mr. Carpenter's here, and he can help answer any questions, but, and speaking to our other dean, Ms. Bannon, in a school district she did before, their search was, or their breathalyzer was actually more intrusive than we do at ours. And one of the reasons why we do this is, you know, there's, there's a history of students and, you know, getting together before events, and we just want to know that when they're with us, they're being safe. So, we've been doing this for quite some time. And so the language that we're really looking to add is really about, to make sure that our community understands that all students are subject to these, you know, to a screening process, possibly a breathalyzer, and then to a search. And what we've done is, we've brought our equipment with us, and if it's okay, we would like to show you how, what the process looks like.
So when kids come walking in, it's a passive test first. So basically, there's an orange dot on the back of it, so I will tell you what I say to every kid when they walk in, blow at the orange dot like you're blowing out the candles in your birthday cake. And all that does when you're doing that is it gives you a positive or negative. If it's a negative, obviously, they move on. If it's a positive, we ask them to hold off, and we take them to a private location, where we would insert the tube that you would do anywhere else if you were pulled over by the police department. And then that gives you a percentage of alcohol in the system. But for the most part, I'm going to be honest with you, I've been doing this 12 years, this has never been used at a school event, because our kids all know what is coming, so, I mean, on its own, nobody comes in under the influence, because they know kind of the process has been that way for 12 years.
And we attach this, and we change it to auto, and then that, that's when it becomes your traditional breathalyzer.
How embarrassing with that event.
Like Mr. Carpenter was saying, our, our students have come to expect this, and so, the one time I can remember is maybe my first or second year, the poor girl had face paint on, she was going to a Spirit Week event, and she got a little bit of the paint in her mouth, and, again, it showed positive on that screener test. But when we brought her into the room, and then we did the regular breathalyzer, it came up with zero, so.
Thank you very much.
So the second part of it is just the search, if you could just...
I was just going to say, do you want us to go over what we do? Because there's been some misconceptions over the years of what a search is. We don't put our hands on anybody, it's a wand. So we have multiple wands, that most of this, all of this stuff was bought through a grant, to be honest with you. So, wand is the same wand you would use for the police department, so if, Mr. Costa, I can put it on a buzz, or you can put it on just a vibrating my hand, so it's vibrating in my hand, because he's got a belt on, and he can wand you, and you're all set, and you're through. And then the actual search pot would be, we do search pocketbooks, backpacks, et cetera. All that stuff is going through for obvious reasons. In the world we live in today, I mean, you can't go in anywhere without either a clear backpack, or a clear pocketbook, or it's getting searched, so we follow that kind of same protocol.
Thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Dean?
I do. I have a lot... I have a lot of issues with the fact that for the last twelve years, that this has been done in violation of the, the school policy that's in the handbook. And questions, you know, leads to question, how was the training done? Not only for the equipment, but for the policy. That when you have two times a year, you're doing, you're, you're searching, and this is a search. Even a voluntary, voluntary breathalyzer is considered a search, even if it's voluntary under the Fourth Amendment. Even for students, although, you know, it's legal, it is legal, you know.
So it never really violated the policy. If you read the policy, we have the ability to search, and we have the ability to breathalyzer.
Said screening.
The changes that I requested in the policy were that we wanted to make sure that everybody is searched. And everybody is, is breathalyzed, just that's in accordance with what other schools do.
Yep, and the policy previous to that did not say everybody. It said if you exhibited signs of alcohol, that you would, you would be, you would be searched, screened, and then breathalyzed.
There was no language for that.
There was no language for that. It was basically, so I could tell you, the previous policy basically was a open-ended thing. It said we had the right to search you, we had the right to do a breathalyzer. When Mr. Tornero was here, there were times that we talked about having, counting off kids, one, two, three, doing the third kid, doing the fifth kid. And I'm gonna be honest with you, my own personal, for me, if you're not doing everybody, well, then now you're opening yourself up to, well, the fifth kid looks like he could do it, so that's why you did it to him. You're opening yourself up to bigger questions. Whereas if you're doing everybody, there is no discrimination, there is no prejudgment of any kid walking in by the way they're dressed or how they look, because it becomes everybody.
Okay, I'm reading this, says a student about whom there is a reasonable suspicion of consumption of alcohol may be asked to submit to a breathalyzer. That's different than a hundred percent screening. That's different language.
And that's why we requested to change it to a hundred percent. But in my opinion, every teenager, there's a reasonable suspicion.
I know, I, I'm, I'm not...
So one of the things I will tell you is, previous to, if, I don't know if everybody remembers, but previous to Mr. Tornero coming here, they had a prom in Foxborough. And there were an entire busload of kids that came off a potty bus, and Foxborough Police called everybody. So I can tell you, when Alan came in, it was all about kind of taking away the culture that had been established where kids were coming in under the influence of things. One of the things, I guess for me, to be honest with you, I think instead of looking at it like we're inconveniencing somebody, we're keeping every single kid in this town safe. Because we know that everybody coming in is not under the influence of something.
And I don't like to talk over people, so...
Does not have a weapon or anything else on.
I understand that. I don't like to talk over people, so I'm letting you finish. But that's, I, I'm not saying I disagree with what you're saying. What I disagree with is the fact that for twelve years, there's, you know, the policy has not been, has not been being followed. And it was just, we just found out over twelve years, now we're changing the policy to, you know, which I, like I said, I'm not saying I disagree with what you're saying, or I disagree with the, the culture. You know, I, I think there should be a little more analysis before we just blanket, you know, screen everybody. You know, but my, my problem with, with what happened is, is the, the lack of training. You know, to, to, to put somebody in charge, or whoever's in charge of the breathalyzer policy, not to go back to the handbook, the handbook that we require every student and parent to read every, every year. And for the administration to, to not go back and reread the policy every single time before they, before they administer a breathalyzer before a school function, to me is problematic. And, you know...
So I just, one moment, please, sorry. I think the best thing about this is we're being proactive to be, and as you said, and you agree, the safety of children, a hundred percent safety of our students. Number two, I think the amendment to the policy is helping to rectify any issues that have happened in the past so we can move forward to do the best practice in order to keep children safe.
Ms. Vogel, I appreciate that. I think that even when it was brought to our attention that we needed to take a look at the language, even when I read the language that Mr. Dean just read, I was like, yes, that is true. We do, that does give us the authority in other cases that if we suspect, even afterwards, let's say a kid passes a screening on the way into a dance, and then while in the dance, they show those problematic behaviors, we will surely pull that kid back. We're not pulling every kid back, but we will surely pull that kid back and do another screening and another breathalyzer. So I think that language, my interpretation of that language. So Mr. Adams' recommendation that we look at this and we, we just tighten it up a little bit is good. Because I do think that there was wiggle room in terms of how to interpret it. I don't think it was clearly one way or the other.
No, reasonable, reasonable suspicion is a legal term. It's, there's not wiggle room in reasonable suspicion. But my next question was, how, how do people get trained on this equipment?
So the company itself, LifeLock, provides an online training. Both myself and the other dean have taken those.
And you guys are the only ones who administer the breathalyzer?
Oscar does as well, but he's taken the training as well, and so do our VPs.
Is, is there a margin of error for the, for the equipment? Is there a plus or minus? You know, I mean, could it come up, could it come up showing alcohol content on somebody's breath and be wrong? Is there...
Um, it has the same rating that the police department is using. So I guess it'd be the same thing as if you got pulled over and did a breathalyzer. Right, the passive and the negative. I guess there could be some leeway, as we just said to you, because sometimes face paint, you came in, you just goggled mouthwash fifteen seconds ago. It could come up, but the other one does not.
What, what, what's the threshold? Is the threshold any alcohol and you have to go home, or is it a certain percentage?
For us, any alcohol, you go home. You're, you're a minor, you're not twenty-one. We're not letting you into a dance if you're twenty-one. We won't even sign a form for you to be allowed to come to...
Yeah, but you're allowed to have cough medicine if you're under twenty-one. You're allowed to have mouthwash.
But it would, so that you understand, when you do breathalyzers, if you had goggled mouthwash within fifteen seconds, that dissipates within your mouth, the alcohol content. So when we do somebody, by the time they come in, if you went to one of our dances, I wish I could tell you that you walked through the door and walked in.
No, I know, my son, my son went to the Clash of Classes, he said it was quick. And that's not, you know, that's, the, the speed is not, not my issue. So if somebody's, if, if somebody's going to prom and they test positive, is there a means for appeal?
Having alcohol in you?
Yeah, I mean, if they...
I mean, after the prom, they'd be able to appeal. We wouldn't let you go home.
No, no, I'm saying if they, if they're in the line to go into a prom, which is, I mean, not for me, I had a mullet. But for most people, it's the most important night of their, of their high school year, you know. And you, and they test positive for alcohol, and they swear on a stack of bibles they didn't drink alcohol. Is there an appeal process, or they, or they just, or they just denied entry?
You wouldn't be denied entry, we'd be having your parents come pick you up. We, we're not gonna let you in a vehicle.
But they won't be able to go into the prom.
No, they would not, you're under the influence of alcohol.
So there's no appeal process for that?
I guess they could appeal it after, but we're not gonna let you into the prom under the influence of alcohol.
Okay, so what, I guess what I'm getting at is if the, if the equipment is not...
No different if we searched you and you had a dab pen in your pocket. You've got weed on you if I can't test you for it, so for that reason...
So, so the, the accuracy of blood alcohol machines is in question. You know, there, there is, there is, there is, there is some, some variation between them. So it's different than finding a dab pen or coming up positive on a, on a, on a machine that really, really relies on accurate calibration. You know, you know what I mean?
Which is why we have them calibrated.
So have you read...
Ms. Feather and Ms. Smith have a couple of questions, do you have how many?
Yeah, as long as I can get one more stab at the apple.
Okay, great. Ms. Feather, Ms. Smith, and Mr. Dean?
Okay, so the intent of, of shoring up this language and, and the intent of, you know, having a policy where we do, you know, a, a policy where we do breathalyze the students, where we do, you know, search students, it's for student safety at the end of the day. And personally, you know, again, I, I am the one that brought this up. I, I'm the one that said, I believe that we should be, you know, utilizing the technology that is available to us that our, our deans and principals have been, have been trained on in order to ensure that our students are safe. In my opinion, also, judging by the other pieces that are in this policy, functions held away from school are subject to the rules for student behavior at social functions and will be considered as if they were on school grounds. That means they can't dap, that means they can't vape, that means they can't smoke, that means they can't drink alcohol. And frankly, I, I don't know, are they allowed to get the police involved? If, if they, if, if, if that's your question around, you know, what is done in terms of an appeal policy? Maybe the appeal policy is that the local police comes by and breathalizes the student.
That was just my question, that wasn't mine.
Yeah, I, I just, yeah, I, I, I'm just kind of...
Are you asking me a question, or are you asking someone?
No, I'm just, I'm just making a statement.
All right, Ms. Smith, please.
Just two quick things. First, the change that we have made in this policy shores up language. There was one sentence, one sentence that we have modified now to make sure it's understood. The one sentence was before, random testings of participants of school-sponsored events may be conducted by authorized school personnel. So that's it, it was random and may. And that was the concern, that policy has been broken because random and may was subjective, and it was being done to every student. So the only wording that has changed in this policy that is any different is to make sure it's understood, this is done for every student, for every event. That's all. It just makes sure that there's no more subjectiveness in the language.
It's not every event.
So it, it is every school event, so...
Is it every school event?
Football games and things like, right, no, social events, like the dances and, right. So, so, you know, if, if we need to, if, if there's more questions or there's other areas that you want us to address in the policy, I think the right and most appropriate way of doing this is that they should be sent to Mrs. Feather as the chair.
That's not what Robert's Rule says, if we want to follow Robert's Rules.
And she can, we can talk about them in the subcommittee and make the enhancements and have that research done.
And then we can do that afterwards.
So right now, if, do you have one more comment?
Yeah, I have a rebuttal. If I, Robert's Rule says if I get my initial, initial, and then if I'm questioned, I have a rebuttal. And I obviously have been questioned. So my rebuttal is, in the, the two thousand and two United States Office of Drug Control Policy established a guide for students whether or how to conduct breathalyzers and drug tests. And they said that, that a couple of the, the benchmarks for being able to do this is you have to let the students know that this is going to happen. And it says several different ways. You have to post it, hand, do handouts, put it on the ticket somewhere, and then inform the parents. Because the children are minors, is that being done in Cromwell?
I think we'd have to check to see... The handbook, I don't know much about that.
I, I could also take a look. I don't want to speak out of turn, but I do believe, but I'm not one hundred percent positive that it's aminal permission slips as well.
Thank you.
That's all, and again, I am not.
So sorry, okay, then Dr. Thornton, Mr. Dean, and Dr....
I'm not opposed to this policy. What I'm, what, what bothers me about it is that it was basically not being followed until we were informed that it wasn't being followed. And the language is important in the policy, in the language, although now it's being changed. I, I agree with the policy. I agree with, I agree with the safety of the children.
So I guess, can I make a comment?
I agree with it. My, my problem is, you know, and, and like the gentleman...
So I guess my comment back to that was, it's not being, I, I guess my view is may means I could or I couldn't, right? That's...
Reasonable suspicion is a legal, actual legal term.
But in the other section, it says you may be given...
Random searches, yeah.
Random searches, right?
Random, as a definition.
May, and can be, I may do it, or I may not do it.
I may do random searches, I, I understand what you're saying. So like, as the, you know, my, my issue is mostly the fact that the policy wasn't being followed. That's ninety percent of my issue. And then my other problem, not my problem, my other concern is that this is a search and seizure issue. This is a civil rights, you know, a breathalyzer is a search. So it should, should be a little more research into, into the legality of it. And I know there has been, they, they have determined that it is legal in, in Barrington and other, other towns. I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Thank you.
Mr. Adams and Dr. Thornton?
I just want to just talk a little bit about, I, I agree that the language is loose, and now it's gonna be better, and it should be. With respect to the mandatory, with respect to mandatory breathalyzers generally, there is no Supreme Court case law on that. There's no Supreme Court case law that says mandatory breathalyzers of high school students at prom is good or bad. There is case law, however, that says mandatory drug testing of student athletes or, the more recent case, the Earl case, mandatory drug testing of student athletes, cleft singers, band people, chess club, that was me, is permitted under the United States Constitution. So the question then becomes, which is a little more invasive process, because the case that talks about the mandatory drug testing includes kids having to give a urine sample with Johnny Teacher sitting outside the bathroom, listening for the tinkling. So that is been found to be perfectly constitutional. My instinct is, based upon the composition of the United States Supreme Court now compared to with when the Earl case was decided, is that, just to, we don't know, there's no way to know. But my strong instinct is that this Supreme Court would find the mandatory breathalyzer of students going to a dance would be permitted under the United States Constitution. You can never say never and never say always in my business. But this is pretty close to that because of the composition of the court. And given what has already been found to be constitutional, this is a much less invasive test. So just to put some context on what the, what the Constitution would say, to the extent that, and I, I don't disagree with Mr. Dean, that it, it looks like the policy may, may have been loose enough that it wasn't followed appropriately. Then you have to get to what, what is the damage for that? What's the harm for that? That kids were tested constitutionally fine, policy maybe not fine? And maybe, I'm not taking a side here on this debate, but it, it does appear that the language was loose. So then you have to look at what are the damages? And there's no constitutional violation, so what's the damage for actually having to give a breathalyzer in that circumstance? I'm gonna say negligible, almost none.
I will say we never excluded a student in the time that I've been here, so.
But, you know, I think it's a good thing, as counsel, you should try to always have the policy match what the practice is. And at times, you're gonna fail. And that's why the school committee is here to make sure you don't, or to follow up. Anyway.
Just one point, I think we had two definitions in your drive as well. Did those come in today? A screening definition and a definition for the breathalyzer itself.
Yes, so screening, and actually, the screening piece is the piece that we wanted to amend. So screening for confirming alcohol in a person's breath may involve two steps. Electronic screening for alcohol. Screening for the presence of alcohol for all participants in school-sponsored events may be conducted by authorized school personnel. Screening for the presence of alcohol will be conducted using an electronic screener, and this is the language we'd like to take out, they're referred to as a wand, because that's not the wand, we colloquially call, colloquially, I can't say the word, call the other thing the wand. That electronically detects the person's breath for alcohol when waved near a person's mouth. Refusal to submit to a screening will be considered an act of omission. And then part B is the breathalyzer. So that first piece, that first screening, as was demonstrated by Mr. Costa, the breathalyzer device will be used to confirm the presence of alcohol only after the person's electronic screening results in a positive test for alcohol under the guidelines set forth in this section. A breathalyzer test requires a person to blow into the breathalyzer device. The breathalyzer will issue additional, digital negative or positive result for alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Smith?
I would like to make a motion to amend the handbook to include the information that Mrs. Feather has just read. We did discuss it at policy, we knew that the amendment was coming forward. We just didn't have all the language together. So I believe it wasn't available for us until this afternoon. But I would like to make that motion to amend.
So I have a motion on the floor to amend the current... I believe that that's, oh, to amend this language, to add this language into it. No? Help us out, Steve.
And I'm not trying to be a jerk here, but typically, the way you would do it is someone would make a motion to approve what's on the, what's on the agenda. And then that would be seconded. Before that is voted upon, typically, what happens is, even though Mark Fiorello used to fight me on this, what happens after the motion is made to approve whatever's on the agenda, then there is a motion to amend, even though this is a motion to amend the policy to begin with, then there is a motion to amend the, the motion. the policy to begin with, then there is a motion to amend the, the motion to include the language that Ms. Feather read. So the, the practice really is, someone makes a motion to approve the amended policy, and then it may or may not be seconded. As the lawyer, I don't wanna tell you guys what to do, whether anybody's gonna second a motion. But it would be a motion to amend the policy as indicated on the agenda, or something like that.
Mr. Adams, can I just clarify? So the language we're changing is actually handbook language. It's, okay.
My apologies. I'm hung up on it. Yeah, motion to amend the handbook, and then a motion to amend the motion.
Okay. I got this. Sorry, I was on. Do I have a motion to approve the amended high school handbook relating to searches?
Am I allowed to?
Someone has.
I will motion for that, yes.
Motion by Ms. Feather, second, second by Ms. Shea. Discussion. Ms. Smith?
No, you can do this. Mrs. Feather has read out an additional statement that I would like to motion to amend the amended policy to include this subsection that she had just read.
I have a motion to amend the amended high school handbook relating to searches according to the definition Ms. Feather handed, read out by Ms. Smith. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Goldstein. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, nope?
Yep.
Okay. That passes seven to zero.
The amended motion has now been passed. Now you go and re-vote on the motion amended.
The amended motion has been passed. Now, can I have a vote on the amended high school handbook relating to searches?
As amended.
As amended.
As amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Wait, no, this is all in favor.
You just have to vote.
We just have to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. That carried seven to nothing. Can I have a vote on a retirement resignation of teacher A per proposed separation agreement? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Shea, second. Second by Mr. Bacon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries seven to zero. And I'm sorry, Mr. Dean. Six in favor, one opposed. Mr. Dean, thank you. Discussion in our vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for 24, 25 school year. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Discuss, motion by Ms. Feather, second by Ms. Goldstein. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Discussion in our vote to approve amended policies. Ms. Feather?
Alrighty, so the policies that we discussed a little bit earlier, back to me, I-12, I-13, 15, and B-2. I would like to vote to, I would like to motion to approve those policies. And again, to state that all policies were approved in subcommittee, three to nothing, three to zero.
Gosh. I have a motion by Ms. Feather to approve the amended policies. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Discussion in our vote to approve payment of bills. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. We have payment of the bills in the amount of $2,273,221.27. This passed fiscal subcommittee earlier this evening, three to zero, and I would move passage.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I have a motion to approve payment of bills by Ms. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shea. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Discussion in our vote to approve resolutions. Ms. Smith?
Yes. First, we have one that we want to take out of this right now. So if you can look at number three, Resolution SCPR-2, 2025-11, we are tabling that for this evening. So earlier this evening, we, we heard Resolutions SCPR-2, 2025-09, 10, 12, 13, 14, and 15 in fiscal subcommittee, and all of those passed. And I would like to make a motion to pass all the resolutions, extracting number 11.
I have a motion by Ms. Smith to vote to approve Resolutions SCPR, SC-PR-2, 2025-09 through SC-PR-2, 202025, -15, tabling SC-PR-2, 2025-11. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shea. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. School committee comments? School liaison, sorry, liaison reports?
Just two great things out of community school. We had another golden ticket winner, so that was fantastic. And also, I think, congratulations again to Mrs. Vaughn to be named Rhode Island's Elementary School Principal of the Year. I was there for the event, and the gentleman who made the presentation had said, this is his first time he has ever seen every member of the administration inside of a school sign off and ask for this person to be the elementary principal of the year. So this is the first time. It was unanimous with all teachers and administration within all of community school. And that's fantastic, especially when it is the largest elementary school as far as student numbers in the state. So congratulations, Mrs. Vaughn.
Yes, congratulations. Anybody else? Okay, excellent. Dr. Thornton, do we need to go into executive session?
We do.
Okay. So. Vote to go into executive session. Discussion items referred to in RIGL-42-46, did I do it right, -5. Before going into executive session, the school committee shall state for the record that any persons to be discussed pursuant to subsection one have been notified in the statement shall be voted in the minutes of the meeting. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dean. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seven to zero. We'll be back. Thank you for coming.